Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page.
Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Board Meeting. Who will first rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our inspirational word for the day, do your own work well and then you will have something you'd be proud of, but don't compare yourself with others.
Do you want to repeat last week's inspirational from you?
Last week's inspirational?
Go try!
Go try! Yeah, I know, yeah.
One more time.
We can say prayers this morning.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We need a prayer this morning.
Get the mic? Okay.
Good morning. Today we have a three-year-old female from Wakeman. She's about three years old. She really needs a good home, needs to put on a few pounds. She's doing well, though. She's up for adoption today. We have this Beagle mix isn't, we have like two other ones there if you come out and take a look. Thank you very much.
a presentation by Ann Hurst, Chief of Police, and I know, sir, that you probably want to get back to the office, so we're going to have you go first before we get into our items. So if you'd like to just probably approach this podium here, that'd be fine, Chief. Thank you.
Hi. Thanks, thanks for having me. So I'm here to update you on the countywide records management system and Phase Two, if you will, of what we're proposing is to enhance the GPS system of the system that we currently have now. This enhancement will do several things. As you know, we rolled out the New World System, the Countywide Record Management System, last year, 2015. Many of the departments went on it. There was another second go-live date earlier this year and the system has done a lot of things for us. It's given us the ability to have everybody's data right at our own fingertips. Prior to this, we had to call other police agencies and ask them for records on certain people and so now that we're all using the same database, it's been a great step forward, especially when it comes to responding to the citizens to their calls for service and dealing with the people that we deal with. So the Phase Two of this project in enhancing the GPS aspect will directly tie into the 911 system in that the upgrade that we're asking for is to outfit police vehicles and fire vehicles with certain equipment and have that equipment send signals back to a dispatch center, whether it's a 911 center or Lorraine Police Center or Avon or Amherst or whoever, but everybody will be on the same system. And that's important because it allows something that's termed proximity dispatching. When a 911 call comes in, under the current system that we have now, the New World System, right now the MDTs that are in the cars are what's seen on the screen that a dispatcher can pick from. That doesn't include all of the cars that are out there, that may be a detective car or a police chief's car or a transport van where a dispatcher can say, hey, I have this unit close to the call, but they don't see them on their screen. So this enhancement will give them the ability to do that, to see all the other vehicles, all the other law enforcement vehicles. So when a 911 call comes in, they can pick the actual closest unit to that call, even if it's not a patrol unit, it might be a detective. So the system, the equipment that we're specing out for this Phase Two has a trigger or an in and out that we have tied into our overhead lights. And Lorraine Police and our department have been testing the system for about a year. It's been working great and it's really enhanced our mutual aid aspect. When we have officers that go into Amherst or that come into Lorraine or during pursuits, the dispatchers in both departments can see all of the cars that are involved in this pursuit, things like setting up a perimeter. The dispatchers can actually see the cars now, whether it's a marked patrol car or an unmarked car, they can see it on their screen now. So we're proposing that we do this countywide and we've reached out to many of the police and fire agencies because this also applies to fire, to know where their assets are at during a mutual aid type event. So we're proposing this for the entire county and after we hopefully get this rolled out and up and running, we can also think about using it to expand the safety of school buses. And when I talk about that trigger that the equipment has in it, when we activate our overhead lights and the dispatcher sees that instantaneously, we can also use the same equipment in buses that transport our kids all over the county or all over the state for different athletic events. And we can hook that trigger wire into a panic button and we can give, the Amherst Police Department can watch all the Amherst school buses and if there's a problem on a bus, if it's in the city or if it's in Cleveland or if they're transporting them to Columbus, if there's a problem, they can hit a panic button in their bus and we know instantaneously where they're at and an alarm goes off that there's trouble on that bus. So we can send resources to that location. So that's down the road, but right now this is Phase Two of the project that we're hoping to enhance and I think it'll be a good project for the community.
Chief, you know, we want to thank you for working with us, especially want to thank our county administrator. I'm surprised he has any hair left in his head. I know it's been a lot, it's been a lot of hard work and, you know, it's something that I think every community and every state has to deal with, trying to get folks on the same page so that we can, you know, be more effective, be more efficient, especially in your line of work, it's more important to be effective. And it certainly is quite important to know where all the resources are at the time. And I never thought of the scenario of, you know, the school bus goes to a high school football game or a field trip and all of a sudden there's an issue and needing to know where that vehicle's at at the time, but the whole thing is improving, you know, response time because we know over and over again, the quicker we can get to the scene, the sooner we can hopefully put to ease whatever the problem is.
Correct. It's directly retired to minimizing response time and knowing where the assets are.
You know, it's not only minimizing response time, but it's also making sure that we have the very best equipment for our frontline defenders that are out there, the safety of the officers as we know things changing in our environment and being able to respond because if something happens, we won't be able to respond to their needs at the same point. So it's helping the community, but it's also safeguarding those that are out there helping the community. And as the chief said, that's, this is another phase of what we've been doing at 911. We had the big microwave software update connecting the four points to the county when they narrow banded all the frequencies and the chief worked with us on that out of Amherst. We gained the cooperation of all the community on that and then we brought the New World software in. This is an enhancement, a second piece of Phase Two of that. I want to work with the schools early next year. They would have to invest some resources, but what we did here, and I got to tell you that the chief did all the heavy lifting on this next phase here. I just kind of get the right to check for the bill, but it was his idea and it's been about a year now. I think I frustrated you a bit because New World wasn't going so well and we got that all corrected and so they've, the chiefs have been waiting quite a while and of course, I think you've been working with McCann out of Lorraine and he's been running point with you on that. But I do want to have a talk with the schools since we're buying a big piece so that other elements can fit under that umbrella so they don't have to rebuy the software, much like our reverse 911 where we bought, we bought a huge block of resources and it lessened the cost for everybody. So what we're doing here is we're buying enough that we can extend this out to other users. They'll have some cost after, after this, like the schools would have to pick up their equipment costs, but they don't have to buy the software and this, am I saying this? The number of allowable...
Licenses, vehicle licenses.
Licenses, I guess, yeah. Underneath the umbrella that we're purchasing, so that'll decrease the cost for the community. The other thing is each user can silo themselves.
Correct.
So that not everybody is minding everybody else's business. I envision this also down the road being used by the county and the county engineers to track our resources, something we've talked about before. And it's another one of those global undertakings that the Board of Commissioners has supported and encouraged and is actually using funds that we have set aside for this to bring the services to the community. So you need to be thanked as well as people who did the work, but without your agreement and consent, all that work is not really productive.
Well, I think the regional collaboration, I mean, that's what the public's asking for anyway and then by purchasing that way and sharing the cost, there's a significant difference. I think that's what they're asking for. If we can join the schools and with it with our MRDD with their buses and transportation, I think there's a lot of opportunity there just to increase the safety of everyone.
Now, we're initially going to purchase the software, purchase all the licenses and the equipment. Going forward, we'll take care of the maintenance cost and the departments that come on board will, after the initial outfit, be responsible for their equipment, correct?
Correct. The equipment and any data fees from Verizon or Sprint or AT&amp;T and things like that, but...
Much like we've done, we did with the software, we purchased it all and then there was agreements in place. It's a little different. The maintenance cost wasn't as huge on this as it was on the initial New World piece. It was very manageable and I felt that we should, we should take care of that. It's not like the reverse 911. So that's a good partnership going forward and that'll also save some dollars for other users. Chief, a real pleasure working with you on this and I'm sorry that I was a little slow.
I appreciate it. We're moving forward.
Yeah, I just think this is another example of, I know this Board is deeply committed to collaboration and helping to facilitate any collaboration that's possible in the county, but of course, we can't do it without partners and so everybody's got to work in partnership. I think we all want the same end result at the end of the day and that is the most safe county possible in communities for our residents and, but it's not possible without everybody working together and that's not always an easy thing to do, but I just want to thank you for all the time you've dedicated to it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks.
Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments?
So move.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Corporations?
So move.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Travel?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summer sheet for employees within jurisdiction Lorraine County Commissioners?
That would be Administrator Cordez.
God, you guys are zipping along real quick this morning. Let me see what I got here.
We'll fill some time with some commercials or something. I like those long commercial breaks during the World Series.
Oh, they're way too long, way too long. But then again, it was so painful last night that I didn't mind the commercials as much. I do have a few issues to discuss with the Board in Executive Session, potential hired job and family services. I also want to give you an update on ongoing negotiations with the United Oil Workers of America. We are negotiating over a job and family services, so I want to talk a little bit about that. And potential sale of real estate, all three issues are allowable under the Sunshine Act for Executive Sessions Discussion. So to ask at the conclusion of our regular Board Meeting, we go into Executive Session, we talk about those three items. Thank you.
Approve, may the reading of the minutes of October 26th?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorize maintenance and support services agreement CTI Technologies and Solutions, Inc., for supportive application, software and software updates of document imaging department in the amount of $127,796 effective January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017, and authorize director to execute in behalf of Board of Prosecutors for those to form.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye. Authorize purchase service agreement, Callnet Call Center Services, Inc., to provide telephone answering services for Adult Protective Services Unit during the non-business hours in the amount of $1,500 effective January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017, and authorize director to execute in behalf of Board of Prosecutors for those to form.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Authorize inter-agency with Lorraine County Child Services for child welfare services using Title 20 Federal Block Grant effective retroactive from October 1st, 2015 through September 30th, 2016 and will not exceed a value of $700,000 and authorize director to execute in behalf of Board of Prosecutors for those to form.
Those states, right?
Yeah.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under solid waste, approve the district market development grant for Columbia Local School District in the amount of $1,270.27 for recycled materials to be used to purchase three benches.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under the engineer, approve an enter engineering services contract, K. McCartney and Associates, Mansfield, in the amount of $48,000 for lateral televising system analysis, Phase Three Project in the Eene Home Subdivision, Eene Township. This includes 160 sanitary sewer laterals on Alton Drive, Island Drive and Elms Road and complete by March 2017 to be paid from the sanitary O&amp;M professional services account.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
That was pretty quick, you guys just whizzed right through that. This is our last meeting before the election next week. I would encourage everybody, the three or four people that watch us on TV to please go out and vote.
Now, is there family members?
Yeah, there are family members, I guess, but please go out and vote, please participate in your government. You can't have democracy unless you have freedom, you can't have freedom unless you're free to vote and make choices. And while everybody may think that one vote doesn't matter, collectively, they all matter. So actively participate in the decisions of this country, whether you like them or not, you can at least have that one day to voice your concern. So please go out and vote. I have nothing further this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Renus?
What's that? I didn't have any... I'll leave them. So you have any?
Yeah. I do have one matter of imminent litigation to discuss with the Commissioners in Executive Session.
Commissioners report.
And I vote for the tribe to win tonight.
There you go. Good vote. We like that one.
Thursday, I had the privilege to meet Vice President Hopeful, Tim Kane, at the new Lorraine High School, which by the way, is a absolutely beautiful school. The whole landscape around the whole entire area is just, just so different and very, very nice. I liked what he had to say, a lot of people showed up for that. Thursday evening, I attended the Lakota Way fundraiser. It was at the New Residence Inn Hotel by the Cleveland Clinic and that place was absolutely stunning. They had a great turnout. I'm sure they made a boatload of money there, which is very needed for Lakota Way. President Gerald Ford's son, Stephen Ford, was the keynote speaker and I really enjoyed what he had to say at that event. Met a lot of great people. One of the things that they gave away was a, well, they didn't give it, they auctioned a opportunity for the chef to come to your home and cook for up to like six or eight people and that chef sat at my table, so it was pretty, pretty neat.
Did it make eggplant?
Yeah, no eggplant.
Got you, Rob.
Yeah. Friday, I took my kids to the Halloween walk out at Carlisle Reservation on Diagonal Road in La Grange and I'll tell you, that Metro Parks have done a fabulous job of doing this. It was only $2, can't beat the price. Stood in line, the line went really fast and it was, it was really nice. My granddaughter did cry one time, so we didn't go in the really spooky houses, but the pathway was absolutely gorgeous. Then Saturday, I attended the Amherst Fire Department Steak Fry at VFW. They had a great turnout there. Sunday, Sunday was a busy day. Attended the ABI synagogue for a bagel brunch and from there I went to Sher Brown's spaghetti dinner, then to Jackalope for the Veterans Purple Heart Pasta Dinner, then to Spitzer at Lorraine County Community College for spaghetti dinner fundraiser for the family of Kenny Velez. They had over 100 baskets and that were being auctioned off and the place was jam-packed with people. Olive Garden, I think they donated all the spaghetti, so of course, it was really good pasta, but I felt like a noodle by the end of the night, so three pasta dinners in one day was a lot.
A lot of carbs.
A lot of carbs. Monday, I had my goodwill board meeting and then over to Judge Walther had his second graduation for his Veterans Treatment Court. I think he had four graduates and a few people that were phasing up to the next level. One person actually went away, had to go spend a little bit of time in jail, he messed up, but other than that, he has a wonderful, wonderful program going there. Him and both Judge Moraldi are doing great work on their special dockets. Tuesday, Illyria Democrat women had their pasta luncheon downtown Illyria, another pasta. Then I headed out to Grafton for ribbon cutting for our tire collection center site. It will now be staffed two days a week on Tuesdays and Saturdays from 9:00 in the morning till 1:00 in the afternoon and it is under surveillance, so people are getting cited for illegally dumping their tires out there, so don't take them out there unless there's somebody there to let you in and take those tires from you. Then I went to the Jackalopes for the women, Lorraine Women Democrat Meeting, came home, watched the Indians lose, but tonight, I'm going to watch them win. We're all going to watch the Indians win tonight, so. And this, like Mr. Cordez said, this is the last meeting before the election, so make sure you get out and vote. They always say that this is the most important election, but I really do think that this is a very, the most important election of all time, so get educated on the issues and make sure you vote tomorrow, or this weekend, Tuesday, in my report.
Or earlier.
Or earlier, yeah.
Okay. Won't cover everything you've covered because we did that the other week. Lakota's out, bagel brunch is out, pasta with shares out, Velez dinner, wonderful turnout, everyone who participated in it, the ribbon cutting in Grafton went very well. Speaking about going out to vote, how important actually last week when the Vice President was in, Senator Al Franken was in from the state of Minnesota, in every vote counting, there were three million votes counted. It took him nine months to get seated, he won by 312 votes out of three and a half or four million votes cast.
That's what happens when a comedian wants to be a politician.
He's smart.
I know he's smart.
Last night, we had our last town hall. Like to thank everyone who showed up, had very nice dialogue, couple council people from Lorraine, Greg Argenti and Councilwoman Pam Carter attended. Nice dialogue going on. Again, after the meeting, because it went about an hour and a half, a little longer than we expected due to the questions, but there was a young lady walking out and I asked her if she was a reporter or a student, because she'd been taking notes the whole time. She had ended up being a student from Oberlin College. She lives here now, she's going to school and I asked her where she was from. She said Portland, Oregon. I said, how in the world did you end up in Oberlin, Ohio? She says, well, track scholarship. She says, I'm a runner. She says, I visit a lot of universities, she says, and you know, she says, I went from as large as the University of Michigan to said I didn't want to ride a bus for 30 minutes to get to my classes that day. She says, I fell in love with Oberlin, so I'm in the community now and I want to know what's going on. So that's who attended our meeting. She's up on the left-hand side.
Yeah, I thought she was a reporter as well.
She's taken notes, had a nice little talk with her, so it was nice to see people getting engaged in the community. There were some of the regulars from Lorraine City Council there for you.
Your good buddy was there?
Yeah, Commissioner Lundey. So always entertaining.
So it was a real cast of characters, huh?
Just a couple of them. The rest were very nice, very respectful and asked some very good questions.
Oh, yeah.
But again, go tribe, go vote. Let's make it a great week between our slate and the World Series.
So we can put to rest the rumors, you won't be, you won't be throwing out the opening pitch at the ballgame tonight, right?
No, I won't. No, don't have time tonight, I'm busy.
They can't afford that talent fee that you wanted, I guess, right? I was not here last week. Finally got a chance to, after being married for six months, get a chance to get a honeymoon, so I think my wife was glad and so sorry to have missed the meeting, but didn't want to end up being divorced without at least putting in a year or more.
You don't have to return the gifts after a year.
Exactly. So had the opportunity, so some of these events were events that I attended prior to the previous meeting, but the Lorraine International Festival had a cabbage roll dinner, which brought back a lot of good memories of my mother. She used to love making cabbage rolls and boy, they were delicious. They were definitely homemade. Wanted to thank everybody who worked on that. The 4-H Volunteer Recognition Dinner at the Fairgrounds, just want to thank Elizabeth Share for all the work she does through the Ohio State Extension Office and they had a really, I thought, clear statement here about the importance of volunteers and I was just going to read it. Volunteers are just ordinary people with extraordinary hearts. They offer the gift of their time to teach, to listen, to help, to inspire, to build, to grow and to learn. But they were all being recognized at the recognition dinner there and I thought that went very well. Was very saddened and shocked while I was away to learn about the death of Betty Moody White, the former NAACP president for Illyria and had a chance to attend her funeral service on Saturday at Second Baptist Church and the church was just packed, a lot of community leaders there, families and friends and it's just a tremendous loss. It just happened so fast and just a great loss, but she was one of those calming people in the storm and she always had the, just the greatest smile and so hopefully she'll be looking down on us and guiding us from above and, but it's a great loss for the community. Had a chance to attend Sher Brown's spaghetti dinner, started loading up on the pasta as well, too. The second graduation of the Lorraine County Veterans Treatment Court, wow, I can't say enough good things about it, as Commissioner Kokoski would vouch for. It was quite a moving graduation. Again, you know, these are individuals who go out, they serve our country. It's amazing that it's taken this country so long to understand the problems of the post-traumatic stress disorders and how it's difficult to make the transition back for many of our servicemen and women and this obviously is that extra step that our country should be giving these individuals to help them turn their lives around and get on track and Judge Walther doing a great job of running that court. He certainly expects a lot. Unfortunately, one individual had to be taken to the county jail that day because he wasn't passing some of his drug tests, but, but for the others who, some of them who admitted that they were probably pushing back a lot and not very cooperative when they first came into the program, but they couldn't say enough about how good it was and helps turn their lives around. So when people like to say that the government's a bad thing, government is a good thing. It helps a lot of people in their lives and their daily lives and this is probably one of the best examples of a great government investment to help people turn their lives around. We met the other day, the Lakefront Lorraine County group, looking over our $100,000 grant that we'll be rolling out shortly, our planning grant for the lakefront communities. Had a very productive meeting yesterday, meeting with a couple of the possible vendors who made presentations on how they would go about putting together a plan for our lakefront. We have another meeting on Thursday about that. As Commissioner Kaylo pointed out, we had our final town hall over in Lorraine and I can't thank everyone enough who participated, our county treasurer, our county prosecutor, the sheriff, the county coroner, and I can't stress enough how we face a financial crisis in this county. We hope that we provided the information to individuals so they have a better understanding of just how serious our plight is. You know, Lisa Hobart looks at, looks at our numbers all the time and, and the members of this Board and the county administrator and I think a financial crisis is a good description. You know, we're borrowing for patrol cars these days, we are getting overrun by this heroin epidemic and as we've said before, Columbus is not coming to rescue us, we need to find a way to work things out on our own and that's where the support of the community is going to be needed. We hope that you do get out and vote, we hope that you vote early and don't listen We hope that you do get out and vote. We hope that you vote early, and don't listen to the insanity and the reckless and irresponsible rhetoric of some people who want to be president saying that it's rigged. The elections aren't rigged. So get out and exercise your right to vote, and go tribe.
Board of Correspondents?
I move that we approve the board correspondence, and I think today we'll waive the reading.
Second.
Mr. Lundee.
Aye.
Mr. Kim.
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to participate in public comment this morning? Okay, seeing no one interested in participating in public comment, I move that we go into executive session, discuss personnel issues outlined by the county administrator, legal issues outlined by the assistant prosecutor.
Second.
Mr. Lundee?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Leary. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
Lifesaver 1 to all units. Lifesaver 1 to all units. We have a mission. I say again, we have a mission.
2 to 1. I have contact. Last Gaviato's, Country Club Boulevard.
I have participated myself in over 140 Project Lifesaver searches. We've never lost anybody. We've always found them, always found them within an average of 30 minutes or less, and that has been repeated across the nation 1,350 times as of today. Rather than having one or two within several thousand that are born with autism, the last statistics that came out was one in every 166 births was autistic. Looking at the Alzheimer's statistics you're talking about, and right now, you've got around 5 million Alzheimer's patients. Well, they say in 30 years, that number's gonna triple to 15 million. Why is that? Because the baby boomers are starting to come into that age where Alzheimer starts to strike.
As we're sitting there, you can see the relief in their eyes, that they know there's something out there that's gonna give them peace of mind, that they're not gonna have to every single minute of the day worry that their loved ones are gonna wander off and possibly die. Our program is so successful, and the efforts we put when we talk to the clients and to their caregivers, they can see that we care, and they can see that in the history of the program is that we're successful.
If somebody wanders off, a call will come in by our emergency pagers. Every responder has a pager, and when the page goes off, we call the number that's on our pager and find out who's wandered, what the situation is, how long they've been gone, what they were wearing, and then we'll send out another page to all the responders, telling them that it's time, we have a mission, we have to respond.
Each transmitter has its own particular frequency, so we're tracking that person and not someone else. If that person happens to wander off, the caregiver is given a predetermined number to contact us. We will ask them a couple of questions. One of them is, "Where did you last see them, and how long ago?" Because that's gonna be the focal point of where we start our search, at the point last seen. All of our responders will start responding to that area. They will have tuned in the frequency from that transmitter. They'll move into the area. Once they pick up that signal, they'll start triangulating on it until they move right into where the person is, or the signal gets stronger and stronger. They pick them up and bring them back home. So it's not a real complicated system, therefore, you know, it works well.
The vehicles hadn't allowed us to cover the ground to get there a whole lot quicker. Once we get close into the area and the signal is very strong, we feel like we're right near the person, then we can get out of the vehicle, hook up another antenna, and go to ground, is what we call it, get out of the vehicle and start searching on ground, and slowly go in and find the individual.
If too much time goes by, these receivers only work for about half a mile on the ground, and at that point, if they're deep into the woods or have just wandered off, you don't know where to start, and you don't know which direction they went, and you may not pick up that signal on the ground. That's the point that they would call us in, and with the aircraft, we obviously have a several-mile range, and we can cover a lot of ground very quickly.
A situation in their family through no fault of their own, have a loved one that has developed the tendency to wander because of dementia, Alzheimer's, or the like, they need to be protected by this program. This is a program that affords the protection that they need. We know that they do everything that they can in their own security measures, but having this program and having this bracelet that they wear can afford them the additional protection that we can bring their loved one home.
Would you want somebody there to help them if you couldn't be there? And I think Project Lifesaver accomplishes that.
It gives law enforcement a tremendous tool to help protect our elderly and the young that are at risk.
They need to be brought home. They deserve to be brought home, and they deserve that dignity.
The United States of America is writing a prescription for pain that is wiping young people like me off the map. Our addiction to legally prescribed pain pills like oxycodone or hydrocodone is leading a lot of us straight to heroin. That's because prescription painkillers and heroin are both opioids, so when we can't get a refill, heroin is the only way to stop our pain or to get the same high, and heroin's less expensive and easier to get. I can have black tar heroin delivered to my house faster than a pizza. Once we start, we have to keep using, not for the high, but because we get sick from withdrawal if we try to stop. It's an epidemic. We're rich, poor, and middle-class. We're from farms, cities, and suburbs. We're from families who had big hopes that we'd live healthy lives and not fall so far from such a high.
They're doing drugs.
It's easy to start, and it's painful to stop.
Prescription drugs are prescription for a reason. If you take too many of a prescription narcotic, you die.
Chelsea was very well-liked by our friends and by our teachers.
Ronnie was going down to Tennessee State to be the next player to come out of Tennessee State.
Joey was extremely popular, just surrounded by friends.
Mark was an athletic, fit-looking kid.
Aaron enjoyed talking and debating with any and all people.
The prescription pain pill problem is a huge epidemic.
This is an epidemic.
This is an epidemic that has infiltrated our young people.
We never had a conversation with Joey about prescription drugs because we truly had no idea that there was any kind of recreational use going on.
The first time I started doing painkillers was when I was 17.
I would steal pills from my friend's mom. Her stepmom had script for Vicodin. That was like heaven. I went in her room and stole Vicodin every day.
He would ask to use the bathroom in other people's homes, and he'd go in there and go in their medicine cabinets and steal prescription drugs.
These medications are available everywhere in every socioeconomic environment.
Ronnie was a starting hat-back, one of our best players. He got several scholarship offers.
Ronnie was very popular in the neighborhood.
Ronnie was a neat freak, clean freak, always had his hair braided. When he got into the pill use, his mood changed. He changed, like, was that Dr. Jekyll, Mr. Hyde?
Ronnie's appearance really deteriorated, and it was really unlike him.
I said, "Are you doing drugs?" And my son looked at me with these eyes of, "How could you even think of that, Mom?"
I was walking up to football practice. My coach was walking towards me. He just had this crazy look on his face. He goes, "You think they might have found your brother?" And I was like, to me, I was like goofing. I was like, "I didn't know he went missing." So I was like trying, making a goof and all, and he was like, "No, Justin, seriously, they, he might have found his body." And I was like, "Wait a minute." I was like, "Whoa, what?" He's like, "Yeah, they, they found, they discovered a body in an apartment in Telford."
I never thought my son would take prescription drugs without a prescription.
Parents often trip themselves up by asking the simple question, "Are you using drugs?" "No." One has to be able to say, "I'm seeing some signs here that concern me."
He was a little bit more argumentative. We thought that was maybe hormones.
The person has what we call pinpoint pupils. Literally, the pupils look like a pinpoint.
She slept odd hours.
We didn't know why he was sleeping so late.
If I wasn't able to get high, then I didn't want to get out of bed, because, you know, the physical withdrawals.
We were missing tinfoil from the kitchen, missing spoons.
We'd find the pens that were cut in half.
Straws.
There were a lot of charges coming on the credit cards.
We thought that there was somebody stealing money out of our account.
That's probably a pretty good clue. There's something going on.
Joey was pretty upset with his roommates. They were spending all their money on medication. Had I known that the medications that they were taking were so dangerous, I would have told them, "You're not even going back to that place."
If you feel something's going on, you gotta investigate.
I thought it was just a phase. We partied when we were in high school, and it's just sort of a phase you go through. You experience life, and you grow out of it, and I thought he was on that track.
Joey had been found, and he was unconscious. He had all these medications that he had just received from this doctor. More than likely, he crushed and snorted it. We're just being completely hit blindly by, you know, a situation we had absolutely no understanding of and no notice of, and in the meantime, my husband's in the house. I'm out front in the front of the house, just, you know, wondering what we're dealing with here, and so finally Joe just came out and said, "He's gone."
I was downstairs getting ready for work. Cookie told me she couldn't get Mark up. Mark was powerful and had the nickname in some circles of Tank. I reminded her that what she had to do was get a cup of water and splash him with it and stay out of his way, and she told me it was different. We found a clear plastic bag of loose pills. I'm not sure if he even thought he was doing drugs, and I know that sounds crazy, but it's not like it was heroin or cocaine. We followed the ambulance to the hospital. A few minutes later, someone came in and told us that Mark was dead. We never thought that was a possibility.
I had no idea that kids were abusing medicine. I came home one night, saw the basement light on, and went up to the window, and my son was crushing and snorting pills.
We would find pills in the shoes, in the jackets that are hanging in the closet in the pockets.
I found some pills hidden under his cushion.
They were in his socks. I never checked my kid's socks.
He took the light switch plate off and put them in there.
Look everywhere. Is it an evasion? No. You're doing the right thing as a parent.
I would question Chelsea, and she would always assure me that everything is fine and nothing's wrong.
Kids don't want to get in trouble, so they're gonna tell you exactly what you want to hear.
There was always something down deep inside that said to me, "Something's wrong. You doubt yourself, because you wonder if you're making a bigger deal out of something."
You know, maybe deep down, my parents knew that I was high.
You can't always believe your child. Their lies get bigger when they're trying to hide substance abuse.
I knew her inside and out, and I remember Chelsea as the little girl that she used to be.
I looked at him, and I only saw the most beautiful son in the world.
It was very difficult to think that she would be lying to me, which she was. She was out using and abusing prescription drugs.
Long-acting agents like OxyContin's are meant to be delivered in the body over a period of hours, if not a day. If they're chewed, crushed, snorted, you get the entire dose at one blast, and if the body's not ready to accommodate that, you will stop breathing.
We needed to call the police, but what are the neighbors going to think?
Put all of that aside and focus on what's important, as difficult as it may be.
Families can't get too caught up in the idea that, oh, there may be an arrest, charge of my son or daughter, they could be in jail, they could be in the morgue.
The law saved my life. If my mom hadn't called the cops on me, I don't know where I would be right now.
It was the most difficult thing to do, to call the police on your own child. It was horrible. I have gone from putting importance on things like, "What college are you going to get into?" to just celebrating the fact that she's alive today. She's doing very well. She's clean and sober. She's productive. She's sweet, and I have her back, and I'm thankful, and it's wonderful.
Aaron had spent the night at a friend's, and they found him blue and non-responsive. They took him to a local hospital.
He was using Vicodin, which we found out through his toxicology, what was in his blood system.
I witnessed him have two heart attacks in ICU. He had staph. He had pneumonia. He went through seizures. The doctor was explaining to us that he was going to die. We held his hands on each side, and we started crying, and he just laid there.
People use the medications in an abusive way, not knowing what the full consequences are, and somebody ends up here.
Within 24 hours, Aaron had opened his eyes.
Parents are the first line of defense in terms of prescription drug abuse.
You gotta sit your kids down. You just gotta tell them about the severity of the problem.
There's a number of steps that you can take.
Educate your child and yourself very early.
Anybody who feels that this can't happen to my child.
It could happen to your kid.
Make sure that you don't have excess pills in your home.
Keep your medication locked up, because you're never gonna notice if something's gone.
What my mom does is she has these take-home pee tests that I gotta take. No, I want to keep my mom proud of me, and I don't want to let her down.
You need to have the conversation with them about drug and substance abuse, and you need to include prescription drugs and guide them so they're able to get through their high school years and into college and through their college years drug-free. Have this conversation before it's too late to have this conversation. Have this conversation before it's too late to have this conversation.
We load up an 18-foot trailer. Rugs, cables, audio/video equipment, sound systems, all the lighting. Then we have the task of hauling everything out of the trailer and taking it into the gymnasium or lunchroom or whatever large multipurpose room they have for us. We're generally there for the whole day. If we're going to be back at the school the next day, we can leave our equipment still set up. If we're going to be at a different school the next day, then we have, we have the job of removing it from the multipurpose room and taking it back to the trailer, loading up the trailer, and locking it up and calling it quits for the day. It started in January 2007 with CERTS, which is Safe Routes to School. And Tim had an idea, developed the Safety Star Program. It has escalated to the point where as of this year's date, we have seen 38,000 students in Lorraine County.
County Engineers' Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School Program has been initiated throughout Lorraine County. We're very excited about this, to help these children from grades K to 4, teaching them to walk the streets safely is, is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorraine County and, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4. Part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations and educate these children on walking and crossing the street safely. And we're quite happy to announce.
We bring safety to the school. We're self-contained, we have all the mock simulations of scenarios such as busy intersections, we have all the roads, movie screens, our audio/video system. Streets, sidewalks, grass, working traffic signals, working railroad signals. And we bring that all to the school so the student does not have to leave. To make sure that all the lights bulbs are working. And if all the audio/video equipment is up and running, we then put on the program. We put together a dynamite program with a lot of positivity. We're very animated, the students enjoy it while they're learning an important rule about safety. When we ask questions, we ask for group participation. It's never just one student answering the question, it's everybody answering the question together. Teachers included. We make learning fun for everybody. We show two, two short films. One is Willie the Whistle. And Willie the Whistle teaches kids in a, in a simple format, the correct way to walk with parents, answer uncles or any other family members that are responsible adults, to cross streets where there are no stop signs or where it's just stop signs and no traffic lights, and to cross streets where there are parked cars, what to look for, when to cross, when there are cars parked along the sides of the street. And again, that's, it's all basically looking left, right, and left. When the short film is over, we generally teach from what the kids just watched. And that's, those are the scenarios then we go over with our, our mock setup. We go over basically what the video has just gone over. And then we let the kids apply what they just learned to doing it in real life, to our, our mock simulation that we have in the room that we are performing in. Everybody leaves at the end of our program with a great feeling, knowing that all they have to do is look left, right, and left again, and they're going to be smiling for a good, long time. I would highly recommend this program to all administrative principals in, in every school system. And it's, it's a very good program, I believe in it 100%. I've had students see me at the mall or see me at a carnival or a festival and come up and say, "I remember you, you're the safety guy, you're Mr. Neal." And the first question I ask them, "What are the three ways you look before you cross the street?" This could be the year after we saw them, and they always say, "Left, right, and left again," and they say it with a smile. So I know our program works.
Because you did a good job today, at the end of the day, you're going to get to go home with the yellow Safety Star bag, okay?
Ah, the fun part. The students get to take home their surprise at the end of the day, which is the yellow Safety Star bag. And inside that bag are some neat things about pedestrian safety. We have the pedestrian safety flashcards. They also will get the Safety Star Certificate of Participation, which has their school name on it and the date. And we like to let the kids know that that's something that they can take home and hang on their refrigerator, they can hang on their bedroom door, or they can have their parents put it in a scrapbook for them. Their parents will receive some information such as the top 10 safety tips for adults, because even as adults, we need to refresh our memories on safety. They, as students, will receive the top 10 Safety Star tips for students. They will also receive a Safety Star maze for those that are a little bit more adventurous and like a challenge. We also offer a safety coloring sheet. And there are some other things in the bag, but the things the kids like the most is the Safety Star pencil. And that's a pencil that changes colors when you touch it. And with that pencil comes the Safety Star Eraser, which is a, a yellow eraser shaped like a star and it says Safety Star on it. We need 40-foot by 40-foot area, electrical accessibility, and a way to turn off and on the main lights of the room for our movies that we show. The smallest class we've done is 15 students, the largest class is 60. So usually, the, the classes range from 23 to 25 students per class. There, there are occasions where the school has to schedule two classes at a time. We're very flexible. We do have the ability to fit into smaller rooms, so we, we pretty much will accommodate to what they can, they can offer. I would highly recommend this program to all principals in, in every school system. At the end of the day, I feel very, very good. I'm excited that I know that kids are going to practice what they've learned and I can go home and sleep good at night, knowing that those children are going to get to school safely, they're going to get home safely, they're going to be smiling, and their parents are going to be smiling because everybody is safe.